And there goes my dog like on cue. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, meeting of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed in the agenda will also be done so through remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/coronavirus. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by visiting www.shrewsburymediaconnection.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To participate in the public comment portion of this meeting, dial 1-747-248-7354 and enter the following PIN, 153-991-490. Please mute your device until the Chair of the Board of Selectmen addresses your agenda item or opens the meeting to public comment. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
John Samia.
Present.
Maurice DiPaolo.
Present.
And Selectman Kane has a work engagement this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie. I know Val's here. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is conducted remotely consisted with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with the item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide comments or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or to mute your computer when you are not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed with background noise. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda, which is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Selectman LeBeau.
Aye.
Selectman Samia.
Aye.
Selectman DiPaolo.
Aye.
Selectman Cassavant, aye. Item number two is to approve the minutes of August 8th, August 11th, and August 25th, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
No further discussion. Selectman LeBeau.
Aye.
Selectman Samia.
Aye.
Selectman DiPaolo.
Aye.
Selectman Cassavant, aye. Item number three is announcements and reports. Do any board members have any announcements or reports this evening? Okay, I just have one. I would like to just thank, publicly thank, the town clerk, Sandy Wright, and her staff for the excellent work with the town election or the, actually the primary election that was held last Tuesday on September 1st. I believe that voting went quite smoothly and that were, there were very few, if any, issues and that the public had a good experience being able to vote in a safe and secure way given the pandemic. So I'd like to just thank them. And that brings us to the town manager's report, which is Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, board members. I'm going to share my screen. Primarily this evening, I would like to take the opportunity just to provide the board with financial update on the Beal Early Childhood, or excuse me, the Beal Elementary School project. We are rapidly moving through and we like to provide occasional financial updates. I want to take the opportunity this evening to provide you with an update on the overall financial position of the project. And then I will move into my COVID-19 update for the board and be happy to answer any questions you may have on either project. Okay. So just to recap and to provide an overview, I'll be just working from the single slide. Please ignore the date at the bottom. Everyone knows it's September 8th. So as we started this project off, when we went to town meeting, we had the big number of $92.8 million before town meeting for their consideration. And obviously, the MSBA contributes this, you know, significant amount of funds to this project. But overall, it was a very large project, the largest project that we had taken on as a community dollar wise. With the MSBA's contribution, you know, the town's obligation was somewhere around $59 million. We went through a very competitive and successful procurement process to find the construction manager at risk, also more commonly referred to as the general contractor for this project. And immediately through that process, we realized about $800,000 in savings or $800,000 that we could reduce the budget by because of the favorable results we got through that competitive process. So as we sit now, we're about one year away from the anticipated opening of such facility at the beginning of the 2021, 2022 school year. And the building has progressed wonderfully from a construction standpoint and a budget standpoint. If anyone has driven by, you'll notice that the vast majority of the exterior envelope for the building is enclosed. Brickwork is being completed, windows are being installed, the site is, parking lots are paved, and the building will be ready for inclement weather as we move into the upcoming months. With regards to the overall status of the project budget in total, through contracts and other specific agreements, we've encumbered $83.9 million, leaving a remaining budget of $8,590,000 left to spend. Now certainly, some of that will be expended. We haven't, the general contractor or the construction manager at risk hasn't signed all of their agreements with all the various subcontractors. For instance, there's some IT work related to projectors, the sign for out in front of the building, or just two of, and actually irrigation well, are the three remaining contracts that need to be signed. Several hundred thousand dollars in value, but not anywhere close to 800, or excuse me, $8 million that we have remaining in the actual budget. What is within the remaining budget is both a part of the construction manager's contingencies, a balance that we have left over, what we anticipated would be soft costs, costs not related to the construction, whether that was testing or other monitoring that we just not, we just haven't experienced yet, we prepared for. And then the owner's contingency, which is the town's funds that would be used to manage any change orders that were parts of the project that weren't originally designed, either intentionally or unintentionally, that were critical to the success of the project and needed to be added throughout. I'm really happy to report on the owner's contingency that we've only spent $60,000 to date despite having a budget of 300 or 4, $4,370,000. So you'll, please don't try to add up all these numbers. Some of the holds and construction manager or senior contingency falls within the remaining budget and some of that's been encumbered. So it doesn't, the eight million doesn't line up neatly with those other balances below. But what I'm really trying to demonstrate is that this project is by far on schedule and under budget to this point. Now, we're not finished. Several months of construction to go until substantial completion in May of 2000, April or May of 2021. So, you know, seven or eight months of solid construction left, but we're in a really good spot. What I like to, what I'm really satisfied with seeing at this point is that when we went to access the bond market and borrow the funds for this project in July of 2019, we borrowed $52,753,000 knowing that, in accordance with the MSBA calculation, our best estimate of the town's obligation at that point was 58. So we left $6 million that we didn't borrow. Well, at this point in time, if we were in a close-up shop today, we'd have actually borrowed a little bit too much money. And there's no penalty for doing that. Those funds would simply become available to the next capital project that's coming down the line, like the police station. So again, there's certainly many months of construction left for this project. We're trending well under budget at this point and hope to stay there. The building committee has done their due diligence and is very, has scrutinized any project changes to minimize the financial impact of those to the town. Again, we've only spent $60,000 out of the almost $4.4 million in the owner contingency balance. It's a really, it's a really solid financial picture. It goes to the building committee's oversight. It goes to selecting the right construction manager. It goes to the right designer and right project management team, which we worked very hard to do, just like we do on all of our projects, and it's really paying off. These numbers will certainly change. I expect that we'll move, you know, we'll have to spend a little bit of contingency as we get to some of the finer parts of the construction, but we'll continue to manage that and attempt to keep this project well ahead of budget and hopefully not have to borrow again like we originally anticipated that we would. So when you think of this, this, this part of the picture, it's good news. When you compound the fact that with our AAA bond rating, we shaved $3.9 million in interest right off the top of this project, I think this project will provide the value to the community that the Board of Selectmen demonstrated that it would and really expects us to provide when we procure a major capital investment like this for the community. So I just wanted to share that good news with the board this evening and be happy to pause there through the chair to see if there are any questions.
Mr. Mizikar, thank you so much for that presentation. It is really nice to see some good news. Board members' comments regarding the update provided to us. Not sure if Mr. LeBeau is trying to unmute.
Well, I mean, Madam Chairman, it's just, it's, it's always great news to find a project coming in under budget and on schedule. So, I mean, Mr. Mizikar, great work. Honestly, sort of what we were hoping for and not trying to hold you to it, but expected. And, I mean, very nicely done.
Anyone else? Mr. Mizikar, I recall back when the project was really in the discussion phases, early on, talking about how much to actually put in reserve or contingency because there was a concern about the cost of steel being increased due to the tariff and the situation that was going on between our country and some of the countries that supply steel to us. Is, did that never come to fruition? Is that partially why we're seeing the contingency not being drained in the way we might have planned for or anticipated?
It certainly did not come to fruition. The project now in hindsight has actually been challenged a little bit more from the coronavirus and its impacts on the general economy and manufacturing than it has been affected by tariffs. We did argue to keep the contingency where it is because, you know, it's really representative for a project this magnitude to have sufficient amount of funds on hand to be able to react to the preceding and unpreceding. And boy, I can tell you, in March, April, and May timeframe, I really thought that there was going to be some extraordinary costs that we were going to have to incur, and schedule delays and other things. But, you know, this construction manager, Fontaine Brothers, has really done a good job. They may have missed one day of work. That would, that's probably an exaggeration of the amount of time that COVID slowed them down. So we're fortunate to have them on board. And, you know, we haven't experienced any other project, significant project cost overruns, and we're bought out. So the, the construction manager has signed agreements with all but three subcontractors, and the vast majority of the price of the project has been locked in at this point.
Thank you. How much of this do you think is attributable to using the construction manager at risk rather than the design bid build process?
Well, I can tell you that whenever the various bid packages go out, like steel or brick or, you know, the masonry or drywall windows, whatever it is, the construction manager, the architect, and the OPM all sit down and they develop cost estimates for that. And having the construction manager that we have, Fontaine Brothers, go out there and really make sure that there's competitive bids on each one of those subs, subcontract really has paid dividends because the actual contract value has been less than the agreed upon budget amount that the entire team, not just the, the construction manager had agreed to and thought was reasonable. We, we've beat that number every time. So allowing for this public-private partnership where the construction manager can line up reliable and very effective and efficient subcontractors a little bit better than we can, has been very critical to this project. And that's certainly contributing a significant portion to the, to the, not only remaining budget, but the town keeping its contingencies and the construction manager keeping their contingencies in check really through this point of the project.
And construction manager at risk is also the plan for the police station if we were to move ahead with that with voter approval.
Yeah, we found a lot of success in that, you know, not only with this project, but the library and previous, etc.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else from the rest of the board? Okay, then we'll move on to item number five, which is the town manager's coronavirus report.
Thank you. So more positive news. Despite not wanting to see any increases since the last meeting, there's been 375 positive cases, which is a tiny increment or down, down to less than a quarter of a case per day. And seeing the trends continue with our, our positive, you know, with our testing up and our positive results down. So we're very happy to see that. There's been no additional deaths reported and town offices continue to function on an appointment-only basis. We're not open for early voting anymore, but this is just my reminder to, like the Chair, acknowledge the hard work of the town clerk's office and thank the public when they were in the building for staying within the designated areas and, you know, quickly exiting the building once they were done voting. It was all very successful and well-run through the clerk's office. So that's really the end of my update for this evening on COVID-19.
That is some good news to see only an increase of three cases since our last meeting. Glad to see that everyone in Shrewsbury is doing their part to keep us healthy as we, especially as we move toward the reopening of school. Item number six under new business is to review and act to adopt and record at the registry of deeds, the order and plan to be assessed against the benefited properties or a portion of Nelson Point Road and Point Road under Article 28 of the August 8th, 2020 annual town meeting pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 80, Section 2. Mr. Mizikar, do you have anything to add on that?
No, I mean, honestly, the, the item really characterizes what it is that you're going to do. This is really the final point where we make the recording at the registry of deeds.
Very good. Take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the board adopt and record at the registry of deeds, the, the plans for the properties as referenced under Article 28 of the August 8th, 2020 annual town meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number seven is to review and act to select a proponent and an opponent for the ballot questions on the November 3rd, 2020 presidential election ballot regarding the ballot initiative for the Community Preservation Act adoption and borrowing, and the adoption and borrowing authorization for the police building project. So we're going to start with the Community Preservation Act adoption. The proponent on this is the Community Preservation Shrewsbury Committee. And then the opponent, we sent out a request for interested parties to submit a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen by noon today. We received one letter, and that was from Benjamin Tartaglia of 19 Kennelworth Road. So we will need to vote, I believe we have to vote on this, for Mr. Tartaglia to be the person who writes the opposing argument.
Madam Chair?
So, yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Just so I'm clear, if somebody did not submit a request by 12 o'clock this afternoon that they would be precluded from being considered, the deadline to submit that you want it to be considered was actually at 12 o'clock today. This was it?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so just to follow up, it, it, can we, are we only allowed to appoint somebody for either a proponent or an opponent's point of view if they submitted a request to be that person? But can we pick somebody else who we think is best equipped or most appropriate to make that argument? I'm just curious. I don't have a...
It was my understanding that if we were to have received more than one letter of interest to do this task, that we would then be choosing, the board would make that decision. But I believe where we only have the one person that came forward, this would be the one person that we tasked with this role. Mr. Mizikar, am I correct or is there something nuanced there that I might be missing?
Well, I think that it's an interpretation of the statute that was, that was passed. I think you could technically make an argument that, you know, the language states, you know, that the board believes best can, you know, provide that position. So I think it's open to interpretation if the board, you know, was seeking to name someone who didn't technically apply. That would, but we'd have to make sure that that's carried out because we're certainly on a tight deadline to get this information back into the office and then printed to go out to all the voters.
But I, I just want to be clear. I don't have anybody else in mind. I just wanted to make sure I understood the process.
Okay. All right. So I'm thinking we do this in two votes or one vote? I was thinking one for the Community Preservation Act and then one for the police. Okay, so I'm going to look for a motion then on the opponent for the Community Preservation.
Madam Chairman, I move the board designate Benjamin Tartaglia of 19 Kennelworth Road as the opponent to the Community Preservation Act adoption question.
Second.
Any further discussion? There being none. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. And then for item B, 7B, this would be for the borrowing authorization for the police building project. The proponent is the ballot committee that was organized to advocate for the passage of this question, Community Supporters for Public Safety. And the opponent, we did not receive any letters from those interested in being the opponent on this question. So that leaves it to council to write the opposing argument.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, I move the board designate town councils, Stephen Madouse, to write the opponent's statement relative to the borrowing authorization for the police building project.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Don't we still have to designate both of the proponents also, according to the statute?
You mean, vote them?
Yeah.
We could, we could, sure.
I think.
Let's go back and, okay, then let's go back and vote proponents for both of them as well.
Madam Chairman, I move the, I move the board designate the Community Preservation Shrewsbury Committee as, to write the proponent argument for the Community Preservation Act adoption question.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, I move the board designate Community Supporters for Public Safety to write the proponent argument for the borrowing authorization for the police building project.
Second.
Okay, no further discussion. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Okay, that brings us to item eight. Review and act to set the date by which written arguments are to be received by principal proponents and principal opponents for and against any ballot questions that may appear on the November 3rd, 2020 presidential ballot pursuant to Chapter 427 of the Acts of 2006. And the suggested date here is September 23rd, 2020, to have these written arguments in the town manager's office. And that the town manager's office will notify the proponents and the opponents on 9/9, 14 days before 9/23. We have no discussion. Mr. LeBeau?
I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, are you looking for?
Just for a motion. I think that.
Yeah.
Everyone's clear.
Forgive me. Madam Chairman, I move the board set the date of September 23rd, 2020, as the date by which written arguments will be received by, received, I believe it's received from principal proponents and principal opponents for and against any ballot question that may appear on the November 3rd, 2020 presidential ballot.
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, item number nine.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Samia.
Just asking a quick, through you to the town manager, just a quick technical question. On these, on either a proponent or opponent, is there any discretion whatsoever if someone were to write an outlandish statement against or for? Is there any discretion whatsoever under the statute or conferred upon the town? Or is it, you have to take it as is unless you're running afoul of law?
I believe it's probably closer to the latter. We'd be very liberal with the allowance of language that's presented by any proponent or opponent. But I could consult with council with regards to factless or inaccurate statements or derogatory language or things like that that I'm sure. factless or inaccurate statements or derogatory language or things like that, that I'm sure we can handle directly.
Thank you. I don't think, I don't think we'll get to that point. I was just curious. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
Well, this this home rule petition, this statute was a result of action by the board in the early 2000s, I think, actually that I proposed. And my memory, and I'm looking to Mr. DiPaolo to make sure I have the same, he has the same memory as me, is there is little to no ability to alter language that's submitted. And I would emphasize, I think it's more on the no than on the little.
I, that is my recollection, and I think we had that discussion early on. And unless it's something that really runs afoul of some state law, pretty much anything goes.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine is to review an act to appoint all positions and members within the Police Station Municipal Campus Building Committee as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Law 268A.
Can I ask a question of the manager, please?
Sure.
Mr. Msakar, does myself, Ms. Los and Mr. Baldinger, I think those are the three people, well, the selectmen are considered full-time employees, and the other two definitely are full-time employees. Do we also need to be designated as special municipal employees? How can you be both?
The designation of a special municipal employee is tied to the position and not the person. So therefore, it doesn't afford you any more or less opportunities under 268A with this designation, but it affords the other members of the committee the ability to, you know, do things that would be considered unethical. I mainly advocate for themselves or a smaller group where appropriate for other matters not pertaining to the Police Station Municipal Campus Building Committee. So again, you have to designate the position, and this is the historic way that we've done it by designating the the committee members of almost every committee as special municipal employees so they can continue to have other political activities in the community despite being on a board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so everyone's all set. I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the board appoint all positions and members within the Police Station Municipal Campus Building Committee as special municipal employees pursuant to MGL Chapter 268A.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number 10 is to review an act to proclaim October 7, 2020 as Energy Efficiency Day in the town of Shrewsbury. And this is a request from Selco. Energy Efficiency Day is the first Wednesday in October. This year, it's October 7. And the message behind it is to save money, cut pollution, and create jobs. So the goal behind this day is to share tips, tools, and stories relating to energy efficiency, which supports more than 2.4 million jobs nationwide in manufacturing, construction, and other related fields. And this has been supported since 2016 by energy efficiency advocacy groups nationwide. So there's no further discussion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chair, I move the board proclaim October 7, 2020 as Energy Efficiency Day in the town of Shrewsbury.
Second.
Okay, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 11 is to review an act to schedule a special town meeting on Tuesday, September 29, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the High School Fieldhouse, 64 Holden Street. Mr. Msakar, if you'd like to share a little bit more about this meeting?
Sure, so board members, in order to take care of what we all know is the most critical next capital improvement project in the town and enable a full and thorough dialogue on this topic, I'm requesting with the board a special town meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 29 for a borrowing authorization for that project. And I would just like to note that we feel it's important to also, you know, set the location as or on the grounds thereof, not just within the field house in case you need a little bit of flexibility with regards to the challenges that we're experiencing with COVID-19. However, our plan, which we feel is completely safe, is to hold the meeting inside within the high school fieldhouse with significant and appropriate social distancing for town meeting members. And given the fact that we are proposing a one article warrant, we feel that the meeting will be sized. While we want all members to come, and we'd be able to accommodate that, but the the meeting should be brief, relatively speaking, unlike a 42 article town meeting warrant. And we feel that it is appropriate to hold it within the high school fieldhouse. But we'd ask for your consideration to set it on Tuesday, September 29, at 7:00 PM at the high school fieldhouse or on the grounds of the high school at 64 Holden Street.
Any discussion from the board?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
I'm sorry, could I just ask the manager, and I'm sure you've well looked into this, but can, I just need, I guess, some reassurance. The rules about social gathering, numbers of people that the governors put out, and I believe there might even been some exceptions for a town meeting. Can you just remind me of how this is consistent with all the various guidances and executive orders?
Yeah, so there is an exemption for essential public gatherings like town meetings. And so the deliberation enacting actions of the local legislative body are exempt from the total number cap for assemblies, whether it's inside or outside. And so we would be exempt from the, those, those caps whenever proceeding with town meetings.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Mr. LeBeau?
I don't know when it's appropriate, and I don't know if we, I don't know if we needed an agenda item to do it. I just don't know how, you know, it's so much of this is, I think, people attending in some ways is going to depend on, you know, the news you hear in the days leading up to the meeting. Are we thinking at all about adjusting the quorum? Or did what we do was the last time was that specific to the, to the annual town meeting? Just what are we thinking about quorum?
So we are thinking of adjusting the quorum. Mr. Msakar, I had asked Mr. Msakar to look into whether or not that was something that was still available to us. So if you wouldn't mind just providing some detail for the rest of the board.
Yep, so there were certain provisions that were only applicable to an annual town meeting or a town meeting that was scheduled in advance of June 30. That was the kind of the first round of governance legislation that came through. But the second round significantly broadened, broadened other actions like the ability to reschedule elections and reduce the quorum and provide for remote representative town meetings. So those provisions remain as long as, and actually including 30 days beyond the governor's declaration of emergency. So given the fact that his declaration of emergency is still in effect, we have the ability to reduce the quorum up to 10% of the original quorum of our town meeting. And we have to provide at least seven days of public notice in order for the board to consider action on that. And that will put us in a position for the board to deliberate and vote on that at your next regularly scheduled meeting on September 22.
Thank you.
Not seeing any more questions or discussion? Take a motion, Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chairman, I move the board schedule a special town meeting to Tuesday, September 29, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the High School Fieldhouse, 64 Holden Street.
And, and Mr. LeBeau, if I could just ask you to include or, or on the grounds thereof?
Certainly, or I would like to amend my motion to include at the high school, 64 Holden Street, or at the, on the grounds thereof.
Second.
Okay, motions are made and seconded, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo? Mr. DiPaolo, you're muted.
Sorry, aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number 12 is to review an act to sign the warrant for the September 29, 2020 Special Town Meeting, which the one article draft is in your drive. So, Mr. Msakar, if you wanted to just take us through this?
Sure, we'll certainly provide the community with plenty of details related to this article. There is one article that we're proposing, which is a borrowing authorization request, which would require two-thirds majority to approve the borrowing amount of what is anticipated to be $42 million to fund improvements to both the, the police station and the town's public safety radio system. And the public safety radio system being about $5 million of that $42 million borrowing benefits several or a lot of departments within the commu, within the town. So it benefits Selco, Department of Public Works, Police, and Fire. So this is really a multifaceted project with the centerpiece being the construction of a new police station to replace the 1972 police station that is found on the municipal campus adjacent to the town hall. And it's the only article that we're presenting and the only business that we foresee needing at this point in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move, I gotta find the, I'm gonna find out what I'm moving here. I'm only working on one screen. Madam Chairman, I move the board sign the warrant for the September 29, 2020 Special Town Meeting as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number 13 under Old Business is to discuss the Department of Public Works Utility Construction Means and Methods. This was a request from a previous meeting from Selectman Kane, who unfortunately has a work commitment this evening. But he did ask that we move forward with this agenda item, and he will follow up at a later date with the manager. So, Mr. Msakar, if you want to just take us through?
Yeah.
A brief description?
We have DPW Director Jeff Holland is with us this evening as well. We have laid out a summary of the methods that we use when managing construction within the public roadway system and right-of-way within the town. Certainly can be a point of frustration, especially whenever projects are being water mains or, or like projects are going on on streets that you frequent or any individual frequents. And part of one of the initial phases of a project like this is utilization of our, what we call our front-end spec that delineates to the winning bidder, what they're expected to do from a cleanliness and road safety, in general, public safety standpoint each and every day on the project worksite. So if Mr. Holland wants to just take a minute or two here to review his memo, and I would ask to, through the chair, to turn it over to him.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Holland. Love to hear what you have to say.
Right, for the record, Jeff Holland, DPW Director. So at the request of the board, I prepared a memo dated August 19 on a way we do our procedures with the bidders on construction projects, both public bid projects, but also on projects that are done privately. The main crux of the question came up centered around the Main Street and Walnut Street water main construction. We typically do each of the streets similarly. Water main, though, is different than, say, sewer or road construction, say drainage, as water main work is, the road is excavated or the trench is excavated, usually left backfilled with gravel up to the surface. We have on this particular project actually paved pretty closely monthly, I mean, weekly. The Main Street portion, good portions of those were actually paved daily, and that was at the request of Mass DOT. That's temporary paving at first, as we wait till the end to do a lot of the testing, and we don't want to have permanent pavement down if we have problems with, if the testing does not pass. We typically on a Walnut Street, we tested on thousand-foot lengths of the water main. But we also keep that as temporary as the services then need to go in. And so when they do a service, they have to re-excavate that portion of the road. And then, once all those services get done and tested, then we do our permanent patch. We do have an inspector on the site, not necessarily full-time, but he's there a good portion of the time, as he has other commitments and other projects going on, that he does try to keep the project clean. They kept the roadway swept as best that we, they can. We will during a construction site, will have potholes that arise, but our inspector's typically there to make sure that those get filled at a, at a reasonable time, usually that the next morning, if we find something when they drive through on a daily basis. The Walnut Street was, it's, it's a narrow road, which is the advantage of us being able to close it, that we were able to actually, they were able to go and did not necessarily clean it during the day and keep it clean, but they did make sure that the roads were cleaned and swept at the end of each day, and then tried to keep the trenches as best they could as smooth as possible. Obviously, when you have gravel, and we had a couple of heavy rains back about a month or so ago, which did offer some major potholes that came as part of the rain. But the next day, those were reviewed by the inspector and then cleaned up by the inspector. One of the issues we had this summer due to the dry summer was dust, which is not uncommon during construction site. There's several methods that the contractor can use, which is water and, or calcium. And the contractor did put down some calcium. But one reason he did pave on a more routine basis was to help alleviate and keep that dust down as much as possible. I said each particular project is different, but most of them are, for the most part, follow the same protocol. I'll open it up for any questions if necessary.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Holland?
Madam Chair?
Mr. DiPaolo?
I, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment or two. When, when road construction occurs, it's always disruptive. And it depends on, on the project, how disruptive that's going to be. That's not unique to Shrewsbury. That's every city in town and highway in the state. I think overall, from what I've seen over the years and what I've seen in the past couple of years, is that very much to what Mr. Holland said is done, is done on a routine basis. I think it is fair to say that sometimes some of the roads are bumpy, even after they've been repaved. I think that's kind of the nature of the beast until we can get to a final repaving. But I, I would like to say specifically about this particular water contractor. But I would like to say specifically about this particular water contractor, they also did the Edgemere project, and I just, early in the morning, I just get a coffee and drive around and I look, I'm just interested in that stuff. And I have to tell you, in Edgemere, many times that I drove down there, you almost couldn't tell that there was a construction project going on after they were done. I think this contractor is extremely neat, extremely clean. Yeah, I could find a couple of places where something might have rutted a little bit, but I mean, that has to be expected in a construction site. But I've been amazed on how responsive and how neat and clean they've been. And as far as Main Street, yeah, they're right. Closer you get to the center where the water main came out really into the travel lane, as opposed to a big section or a couple of sections primarily in the breakdown lane. So you're not even driving over that. Yeah, there are some places where it's a little bumpy, but that's also the result of multiple excavations previous to this project. So my sense is, yes, you have to keep these things as clean and as smooth as possible because not just for the inconvenience, but also damage to vehicles that might drive over room during construction. But I think we have to expect when there's a construction project that the road is not going to be perfect, like it was fresh ground and then repaved. I think there has to be some reasonableness, and I think occasionally, yes, not only on this contractor, but guys with it, I didn't see it with this contractor. Sometimes there end up being ruts that are a little bigger than what you would expect, and those need to be fixed as soon as possible. But I think we have to understand when the roads on the construction, it's not going to be pristine. And I really do think that DPW has done a real good job of trying to keep those roads as passable and as in good repair as possible in the middle of the, in the middle of construction. So I really just want to give kudos to this particular contractor and to DPW for the work they do to try to keep these roads in good shape when they're being worked on.
Thanks, Mr. DePaulo. Anyone else? Mr. Holland, any other comments?
The only comment is, thanks, Mr. DePaulo, for those kind words for the, I'll relay them to the people we have in the field. But I do want to say that sometimes when we do have rutting, after we do, say, right after the construction project, the reason we don't repave the road immediately is we want, there will be some settlement of the trench or of the roadway, as the existing material and the new material that goes in are different, so they need to, they settle at a different rate. So we usually wait a year or two to be, if we, to do a final paving job. The contract's required to do a temporary, or permanent patch, but if we repave the road, i.e. like we did Lake Street last year, we did the water main and drainage a year or two before that, and then we allow that to settle to hopefully we don't have any depressions caused by the cross trenches or the trenching of the roadway. So we do do permanent patch, but we do come back at a later date to do a final paving, usually a little bit more comprehensive than just what this contract, than the contract does, just to try to keep the, as much settling, settlement has stopped settling or at this point.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Yeah, Mr. DePaulo?
Just to follow up, if nobody else has any comments on this. Mr. Holland, am I correct that a contractor essentially owns maintenance of the trench over the first wintering of the project? Their responsibility doesn't end when they make the last patch after the work is done, does it? Doesn't it go for a period that they own that trench for a while?
That is correct. So they owned for one year after we deem it to be complete. And we withhold retainage for one year from the date of that date, and they own any potholes, sinkholes, anything depressions or failure even of the pipe between now and for the next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Holland, for that very detailed memo to the board. I will make sure that Mr. Kane follows up with the manager.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, that brings us to correspondence, and items number 14 through 50 are decisions from the Zoning Board of Appeals from January 2020 through July of 2020. Item number 51 is a letter dated August 18th, 2020 from Giles Quintal, Executive Office of Administration and Finance regarding the Commonwealth's search for leased space of flex or light industrial space. Letter, item number 52 is a letter dated August 20th, 2020, from Christopher Manatow, moderator, regarding the Shrewsbury Finance Committee appointment. Dennis O'Connell was appointed to fill the remaining vacancy on the Finance Committee, which was left by John Segalnick, who was filling a vacancy for Brett Akarp, who had to resign. Item number 53 is a letter dated August 21st, 2020, from Stephen Viget, Chairman of the Shrewsbury Board of Health, regarding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force Delegate, and the Board of Health has sent Jenny Fishman to join that group. Item number 54 is a letter dated August 25th, 2020, from Christine Maury, Executive Director of Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, regarding SYFS response. Mr. DePaulo, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, I did it again.
That's okay.
Thank you. If I could just have a minute on this item. As board members know, this letter from SYFS was really to address issues that are comments that were made in the August meeting of the Shrewsbury Housing Authority by a couple of members. And I'm not going to go through the letter. I think we all read it. I do agree with almost everything that Ms. Maury said in this letter about what was said by the Housing Authority members. But as a member of the board and not representing the board, but as a member of the board, and certainly as an individual member of the board, I just, there were, I found the comments to be a little bit surprising. I found them to be, in some cases, inappropriate. Some of them frankly were not completely accurate. And I just want to highlight a couple. I won't dwell on this. My initial reaction to this thing, I probably would have had about a five-page response to it, because I found it to be particularly unusual for a board to, a public board to publicly disparage a report in the work of another board, because they didn't like the report. But a few of the things that were said was that our board generally agreed that the data collection methods, the data itself were not sufficient. I think we did all agree that the citizen survey was very lightly responded to, which was unfortunate. But as was said in the, in the meeting and in the report, there were a lot of meetings with individuals, with the stakeholders, from the police to the Worcester, can't think of the name, Elder Services, St. Anne's, et cetera. So there was a lot of in-depth interviewing that went into that report and the findings in the report, and the analysis was done based on a lot of that. And I will have to say, for as much as these members disparaged the report and tried to dismiss it because they didn't find that it was particularly flattering to the Housing Authority. That, most of that data that came in the documentation, that came, that was in that report, actually came from the executive director and the staff. So for the Housing Authority members to try to diss that information, it was their own, it was their own people who gave us that information. And to just try to discredit some of the comments of the residents, that there was just a bunch of disgruntled residents, I think is unfortunate. It doesn't make what they said any less true. Maybe they were complainers, but that doesn't invalidate what they were saying. I just have a couple of things. It was said, and it's almost an exact quote, that it was clear that Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services saw this as an opportunity for additional funding. That is absolutely not true, and I think we all know that. As a matter of fact, when the first draft came out, that I had seen, before I even read the whole thing, I asked Ms. Maury how many people she thought we were going to need as a result of what they found, and she said none. And the report says that. The only thing they advocated for or recommended, they didn't even advocate for it, was that the outreach coordinator for the COA be full-time as opposed to a four-day week, and that the agencies, the boards that were involved in providing services to the seniors get together and be more collaborative and communicate better to coordinate service delivery to make it more efficient. So I just, I think that was unfortunate that that was said. It's clearly not what was said in the report, but it was said anyways. There was also something that was said, and this is a quote, that the report was self-serving. I don't believe the report was self-serving. The Board of Selectmen asked for this study, the town meeting approved this study, they reported what they found. I don't see any particular benefit to this for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services or the town in general, other than to create an awareness of the issues that are facing seniors in town. And it's not just the Housing Authority. One comment that particularly upset me, and I, although I wasn't mentioned by name because I was advocating for several years for additional outreach people for the Council on Aging, I'm pretty sure that it was directed towards me, that one of the selectmen's thoughts were carried out and put into the study. In other words, this study was written to justify what somebody had been saying over as a selectman, whether it was directed at me or not, to be honest with you, to be insulting, to be untrue, and just totally inappropriate. In closing, I will say, and I could go on forever, but I won't, although I'd like to, that that report was done in good faith. Everybody went into it in good faith. All right, there's one other thing. One of the members said he only spoke for 10 minutes on a meeting that went on for two hours. I don't really know if it went on for two hours. It's not the point. The point is, that individual spoke for only 10 minutes by his choice. Nobody limited him. He said he wasn't going to speak, as they had sent a letter, and the letter spoke for itself, and they weren't going to rehash it again. So to imply that he only spoke for 10 minutes, like he wasn't allowed to speak, I think is a bit disingenuous. But I just, I just find it, I really was disappointed, and more than that upset, that instead of looking forward, like everybody else that was involved in this study, in the report, all the other agencies of saying, okay, this is what we found, this is what we're going to do forward, we can fix a lot of this stuff. At least these two members chose to be dismissive of the report and try to downplay its findings because they didn't like what it found about their particular agency, which was not, by the way, wired to be part of this study. They were asked, and the executive director said, yes, she wanted to be involved. So I'll stop, but I just, you know, maybe I took some of it a little too personally, but I have to tell you, I watched it several times, the replays, and I think I understood what was being said. And I just think it's unfortunate, because it hurts our agencies working together, I think, when people say like that, stuff like that, to score points for themselves. So I'll just leave it at that. Sorry I went on, but obviously I wasn't happy about it.
All right, item number 55 is an email dated August 25th, 2020, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant opportunities local municipal police and fire departments. This Shrewsbury Fire Department was awarded $33,963.96 to purchase 25 compliant portable radios. Item number 56 is a letter dated August 25th, 2020, from Sashi Armenton, Chairman of Council on Aging, regarding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force Delegate. They have put forth Dr. Zoya Meta for this committee. Item number 57 is a letter dated August 26th, 2020, from Marie Claire Wigby, National Grid, 939 Southbridge Street, Worcester, regarding vegetation management, 2020 CMR Section 22, tree pruning and removal within the electric transmission right-of-way. Item 58, email dated August 26th, 2020, from Julie Feeney, 25, Janet Circle, North Grafton, regarding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. Ms. Feeney is a resident of North Grafton, and they have been working towards implementing a similar task force to what we've done here in Shrewsbury, and she was looking to have a member from this board either speak to her committee or contact her committee, so I will respond to Ms. Feeney. Item number 59 is an email dated August 26th, 2020, from David Stodden, DPW Business Manager, regarding the Clergov case study. Item number 60, an email dated August 27th, 2020, from Beth McCollum, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent of Shrewsbury Public Schools, regarding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force Delegate. The school committee is sending Lindsay Heffernan to be part of the committee. Item 61, an email dated August 27th, 2020, from Emily Larson, Administrative Assistant Building and Planning, regarding the Shrewsbury Open Space and Recreation Virtual Public Forum. Selectman DePaulo and I attended that virtual forum along with 30 to 40 other participants to discuss the open space and recreation plan. Item number 62 is a letter dated September 1st, 2020, from Brian P. Sullivan, Director of the Green Communities, regarding Green Communities Grant Award. So the town of Shrewsbury was awarded $1,084,302, and the proposed projects is Parker Road rooftop unit replacement, which is $130,000 of the award, and then Fieldhouse LED lights, high school LED lights, LED lights at the Floral Street School, and LED lighting at Oak, and then a certification training for building operations, which is also included in the amount. So I believe that was Keith Baldinger that wrote the grant, and we received that award. And so I'd like to thank him for his work on that, and also to Selectman DePaulo, who pushed so hard to make sure that we were able to earn that Green Communities designation, which makes us eligible for these types of grants. Item number 63 is an email dated September 1st, 2020, from Gail Eslanian, the Shrewsbury Garden Club, regarding the scarecrows on the common. Ms. Eslanian writes that they, the Garden Club has decided to push the dates of the scarecrows on the common a little bit, because there isn't a Spirit of Shrewsbury festival this year to coincide with. So she's recommending October 1st to October 25th, and the Garden Club will be working with Ann- And the garden club will be working with Angela Snell to make sure that there's adequate spacing, the six-foot apart spacing for the coronavirus mitigation. And this year's theme will be honoring essential workers. Item number sixty-four is an email dated September 1st, 2020 from Jane and Ed Hedberg, 34 Patriot Lane regarding an update for 47 Memorial Drive dog issue. Item number sixty-five is an email dated September 1st, 2020 from John L. Dolly for Jill Circle regarding a voting problem. Mr. Dolly wrote to the, to the town clerk Sandy Wright, saying that he had a, there was a problem finding the voter list, the page that he would have been listed on. And Sandy Wright did reply that that page accidentally was folded and the warden did not initially see the page, but that a phone call was made to the clerk's office to verify the identity of the voter rather than holding the voter up, looking for the paper. And that the paper was then found quickly thereafter and there was no compromise to the integrity of the voting. The voter also questioned why there was no checkout table and that was removed at the order of the state election board. So item number sixty-six is an email dated September 2nd, 2020 from Rob and Deb Luke, 28 Patriot Lane regarding the nuisance dogs at 47 Memorial Drive. And if it's okay with the board, I will work with the manager to respond to this email. Item number sixty-seven is an email dated September 20th, 2020 from Sandra Wright, Town Clerk to John Dolly for Jill Circle regarding the voting problem, which I just discussed. This was her response to Mr. Dolly. And item number sixty-eight is a letter dated September 2nd, 2020 from Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, to Sandra Wright, Town Clerk, regarding Acting Town Manager. And item number sixty-nine is a letter dated September 3rd, 2020 from Beth Cassavant, Chair, to Town Moderator Christopher Mina regarding town meeting efficiencies, which this board discussed at our previous meeting about keeping some of the things that we have found work pretty well that we wouldn't have really known about had we not been in a pandemic situation such as clustered and bundling voting consent agenda and changing the part of the general law that relates to the time and place of the town meeting to offer greater flexibility for us. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. If there is nothing else to come before the board in open session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hi, Mr. Lebo.
Hi.
Mr. Samia.
Hi.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Hi.
Myself, I. This meeting is now adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.